All right, we'll call this regular meeting of City Council order on February 10 at 7:09. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Duffy, would you give the opening prayer?
Sure. Dear Lord, please allow City Council to make proper judgments with a clear mind, a clear heart, and a clear soul. In your name we pray. Please silence your prayer.
Clerk call the roll.
Lawson.
Here. Here.
Is Sonic? Here. Duffy?
Here.
Flower?
Here. Here. So at this point, I'd like to amend the agenda to go into executive session under ORC.
I'll second that. Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes. So we're going to executive session under ORC 121.22G for personnel and legal matters. Invite in Mr. Rowe, Chief Oliver, and Council Clerk Ms. Harmony. And we will go in at 7:20.
So move.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to return from executive session at 7:23. So move. Second.
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to instruct the city attorney to vindicate the council clerk in the matter against you and the rest of us at all costs.
Second.
Mr. President, do you want me to give an explanation for necessity?
Yes, fully covered, robe.
So, as I'm sure many in the public are aware, Mr. Smith on Friday filed-
Quiet, please.
-filed an action against the city. In it, it includes an allegation that Madam Clerk acted in bad faith. That is wholly without basis in law or fact. And because of that, I've asked the council to instruct me to take all appropriate action that's necessary to vindicate the clerk, who has, I should know faithfully for decades serving the city.
Okay, motion on the floor?
Second.
Second. Second, so clerk call the roll. Yes.
Mr. Commandant?
Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Definitely yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Okay.
Can the audience agree with that 100%?
Yeah, it's maybe a typical bully move. Thank you.
I would like to also order the law director to keep all respondents updated as the lawsuit proceeds. Keep us updated on the status of that. I will do that. Thank you. All right, with that, did everyone receive the minutes from the last regular meeting on 1/27/25?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections?
We got a mayor instead of mayor.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll look.
And what do you think, if that's my goodness?
Okay, motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes. Also, there were minutes from the special council meeting on 1/28. Everyone received those. Any corrections or additions? Motion to approve those minutes? So move. Second.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Are there any citizens' comments?
I have some more good news. So Ann LaRue was watching the street. I don't know if any of you got this, this was in my mailbox. It was from the Hocking College Press. And it says Nelsonville, lifelong advocate of glimpse of the betting Joe Parsley advocacy journey. It was a wonderful article about all that Betty Jones does for our city. And I know most of you know and have experienced it. And there's nothing that she wouldn't do to make this a better place, so. All right, kudos to that, and it's a good thing that this happened. The other is just a little quickly, the Elks made a donation to the warmth center with some of the money they gathered from selling their soup so that they can be warm a little longer. So that's all I have, but those are good things that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any business and organizational comments? This is where we can do the cat and hawk.
Well, I was gonna do that during my-
During that, okay.
But I can, if you'd like me to do-
We can do it then.
All right.
All right. Committee discussions, did any committees meet since the last council meeting?
We just met. We just fired. Yes?
And? And? Do you have an update?
Shall I call you?
Do you have an update, sir?
Yes, sir. Chief Barber gave a presentation on him giving service to the Green Township, one of our Green Township trustees, Green Township trustee?
Yes, sir.
Right. Is here and offered his opinion on it. And there were some very good, positive things, I feel, come out of that. So we're gonna take it into consideration as the police and fire committee. We didn't have enough votes to take it on to the city council. So we'll investigate a little bit more and see what we come up with. But I think it's going to be a very positive thing for the city. So that's it.
So the committee's gonna meet again to discuss that first?
Yes.
Do you know when that will be?
Don't know right offhand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Department updates. Anyone on for this meeting?
No, the only thing I had was a proposal that I proposed to the police and fire committee. And the only thing from my update is if anybody on council has questions or concerns about the proposal that you had in front of you, the same one that was given to the police and fire committee, please email me or call me, whatever you prefer, and ask those questions. If there are legitimate questions from the anybody on committee, please send them to me so I can answer that for you.
May I ask something?
Yes.
The thing that I need for you to understand is, when you have a proposal like that, you came in and thus, we knew nothing about it. And I know the meaning was to let us know. But as you know, the meeting ended and we were still talking about it.
I understand.
So that's the reason.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief Barber? Thank you. City Law Director update.
Yes, so the Commission on the Implementation of Issue 23 had their first meeting. I think two of the commissioners are here in the audience. Ms. LaRue was elected Chair of the Commission. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Lincolnship, I missed you, I'm sorry. You got tall guy in front of you. They had a very productive initial meeting, they gave me some homework. They did set their schedule, they are going to be meeting the first and third Thursdays of each month. I think that works well because then, the purpose for that, as I understood it, was so that they had time if they developed any proposals, that it was sufficient time to have it on the next council meeting agenda on the second or Monday. I think that that's an excellent way of structuring it. Like I said, there was very productive conversations to be had, and I just really appreciate each of the commissioners, members of the commission discussing the issues that are facing the city with the transition, and I just really appreciate their ideas and thoughts.
Anything else? Any questions for Mr. Rowe?
Uh, we as council members, going to these meetings as individual citizens, that's not a problem, is there? It's our city too.
Right, there's nothing to preclude an individual member of council from attending the meeting, or certainly, you know, if you're doing it online.
Just wanted to make sure that there wasn't nothing wrong with it.
Right, I just, you know, remember, since it is the commission and they are kind of sitting at this table, it's the commission's meeting, not the council.
Right.
I think anybody would understand.
Well, we have individuals that we couldn't be there, but, I mean, I just wanted to make it clear that we are still citizens of Nelsonville. And we have a right too.
We had two council people there at the last meeting, and after we got started, they had questions and they were brought up.
And I understand, but there was objections to it from other people. That they were, because they were council members, they shouldn't have been there. It was an objection that was brought up. But the thing is, we are still citizens of Nelsonville, that we still have a say so in this.
Okay, so as long as the city council member's not running the meeting, they're a citizen also. So there it is.
Okay, I was one of the people there, and I take offense to what that certain person said.
I said it, Nancy, you can use my name.
Well, I'm sorry, I was-
You can use my name.
Anyway, Joanne and, yeah, God, I'm sorry. Laura, did we-
I can read.
Did we in any way say anything that influenced you guys on what you were talking about? And anyway, the only influence came for us to think about something else.
Yeah.
And that's not bad.
If I may, Mr. President, I think, as councils are all aware, there is in that implementing ordinance, setting up the, establishing that commission, that the commission's supposed to be independent.
Right.
Right.
And based off of that, I would, you know, I think it's part of the duties of the Chair of the Commission, if there is something that they notice that is improper under that, to then notify me, which I am sure Chair LaRue would do in a heartbeat. And, and of course, you know, if, if other members of the commission feel that way, I'm sure they would alert her to that fact immediately, and then corrective action.
And the way I understand it, because they're conducting the meeting and we're attending as private citizens, the meeting, the laws pertaining to meetings does not apply to us, to where four or more together there?
Well, the problem, so if I understand your question, the question is if four members of council, as you know, four is a quorum. And anytime, it could even be at Kroger, if there are four people in the breakfast cereal aisle, and you start talking about city business, that becomes a public meeting. So it's best to avoid situations where, except in council meetings such as tonight, you don't have four or more, just because you never know when you can start talking about city business. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is just, you know, as a precautionary measure, you know, if you can avoid-
Well, the wild thing is, because these meetings are announced and everything, wouldn't that cover the announcement of the meeting?
Well, that would be the announcement for the commission, but if four members of council showed up and then started, let's say, sitting over there, start talking about city business, that would also-
But that would be talking amongst us, not talking to the-
Sure, but I guess what I'm saying is, the safer thing to do would just be, make sure at this meeting, there aren't four or more council members. And this, since it's being livestreamed anyway, it's just gonna be safer. I would imagine all of council would be interested in the goings-ons of the commission, but thankfully, we do have those technological solutions to alleviate that potential. I'm not saying that that would be a violation of the long dispute.
But I understand.
Sometimes prudence is the better course of valor.
Mr. President, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
I, I remember distinctly when we were having this discussion during the judiciary, I believe it was, committee, that I made the comment that I don't think any council should be involved in the ad hoc committee negotiations or restructuring of the former, the statutory former government. The reason I said that is because of the lawsuits and counter lawsuits that was going on to stop the 70% of the population of Nelsonville voted to change the former government. So I felt that that wasn't proper for us to be sitting, well, the lawsuits that were going on, as far as going to court and trying to get it stopped or overturned, that I didn't feel that we should be there, that it would be counterproductive on what they were trying to do. So in my defense, that's why I said that.
I take a great deal of offense to it also, because I know what I'm supposed to do, and I know what I am not allowed to do.
You do.
Well, I would like to make the comment that the meeting was streamed, livestreamed, it's out there. Anyone can watch it and form their own opinion if they felt that the two council members, one of which was myself, influenced that committee at all. I think they did a great job. It was their first meeting organizational-
I'm not saying anything yesterday.
No, sir, I have four, thank you.
Yeah, you take it.
Okay, so they are working towards the valid issue 23 to implement it. So no one was objecting to anything that they were doing. So with that, we do have some first readings of ordinances and resolutions. We'll start with ordinance 625, if someone would like to introduce it.
I shall.
And ordinance confirming the acting city manager's appointment of the city attorney officer as the city criminal prosecutor on an interim basis and declaring an emergency. Whereas ordinance 0122 established the Nelsonville City Criminal Prosecutor position. Whereas attorney Jamarcus McCartney faithfully served as the Nelsonville City Criminal Prosecutor, but has recently departed service to the city. Whereas the city is in negotiations to contract with and appoint a permanent city criminal prosecutor. Whereas while those negotiations are ongoing, there is a need to provide for the city criminal prosecutor position on an interim and emergency basis. Whereas the acting city manager has appointed the city attorney to serve as city criminal prosecutor on an interim and emergency basis. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The acting city manager's appointment of the city attorney as city criminal prosecutor on an interim and emergency basis is hereby confirmed. The city attorney shall be paid a monthly stipend of $1,500 per month for those months during which he serves as interim city criminal prosecutor. The first month for which he shall receive this stipend shall be February 2025. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to ORC 731.15 and Nelsonville City Charter, Section 4.09 through 4.11. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, Article 4, Section 4.09 through 4.11, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to provide for the vacancy that has arisen in the position of a city criminal prosecutor to ensure that the city is fully able to prosecute criminal cases before the Athens County Municipal Court, and it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will be enacted by council on first reading on the tenth day of February 2025.
Motion to suspend the rules? Second. Council discussion on suspension? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Commandant?
Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Motion to adopt? So move. Are there any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
Yes, any prospects for replacement? Yes, I'm actually a specific individual that I reached out to, I just need to follow up with them. I showed my plan to do that late last week, I just got away from it. I'll try to reach back out to them this week.
This pertains to Athens Court, right? We don't have a court here, so Athens is correct.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Commandant?
Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Ordinance, good. Ordinance 625 passes.
All right, just for, just to let council know, so Mr. McCartney was paid a little over $1,800 a month, the acting city manager wanted to make sure that we were saving costs, so he might be $1,800, which is reduction for a month would be appropriate.
Thank you for that. Ordinance 725, if someone would introduce it. I will.
Thank you. And ordinance authorizing the purchase of an additional cruiser for the police department and declaring an emergency. Whereas Nelsonville Police Department replaces police cruisers in accordance with a cruiser replacement schedule. Whereas an additional police cruiser is needed for the police department in accordance with the cruiser replacement schedule. Whereas funds for the purchase of the additional police cruiser are covered with a pre-existing purchase over secured with ARPA funding and the remainder of the police department's budget capital improvement fund from last year. Whereas the police chief has secured a quote for a cruiser to be purchased using the funds already appropriated and authorized. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city to purchase an additional replacement police cruiser. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The police chief is hereby authorized to purchase an additional police cruiser in accordance with the police department's cruiser replacement schedule, according to the quote attached near to and incorporated herein by records as a dividend A. The council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to ORC 731.15 and Nelsonville City Charter, Section 4.09 through 4.11. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, Article 4, Section 4.09 through 4.11, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to purchase the police cruiser before the expiration of the quote provided to the police chief, and it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will be enacted by council on first reading on the tenth day of February 2025.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules? So move.
Second.
Any council discussion on suspension? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Count?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Commandant?
Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes. Motion to adopt? So move.
We're getting rid of an old cruiser real quick. Well, we'll get to that.
I have one question.
Oh.
Where it says, where it says the police chief is hereby authorized, should not be the city manager because he is the contracting officer, not the police chief, even though the police chief is acting in that role.
So council can always authorize someone other than the city manager in a specific situation, but if council would prefer to amend it?
Just, just, just as long as, with the way we've been nitpicked here lately on different things, I just wanted to make sure that we're within legal rights.
It's an excellent question, as long as, as long as the ordinance is specific about someone other than the acting city manager, that's-
All I want to know. Any other council discussion?
Oh, I thought we were supposed to second. Or did I miss something?
I got one. I got-
Oh, you had it, oh, I didn't hear. Yeah, along the same lines, I wanted to ask Chief Oliver, the cruiser you're going to replace, you have a read, I mean, is it just due to this?
It's a 2013 with 180,000 miles on it.
Is that the one that was given to us from?
Yeah, it was one of the first ones.
Wait. That was a pretty-
Run its, I expect, it's even starting to rack.
Was that for a book? No.
No, this is one of the ones that got donated from Brooklyn Heights.
Brooklyn Heights, yeah.
Oh, with the other cop, yeah, okay. A Taylor, any, any new funds being used for this purpose? Or was this already appropriated, covers?
This is already appropriated, this will be coming from the American Rescue Plan dollars from the previous administration. The deadline for those dollars was December 31st, 2024. They had to be what's called encumbered or under a purchase order. Seeing as we're past that deadline, this is not to force council's hand, but I wanted you to have the full information, which is, we either purchase, the cruiser already on the purchase order, we have to return those funds to the federal government. They don't go to the force bank.
It'd rather be spent here. Does this, does this pay for the cruiser? Because I saw the exhibit A was just like 65.
Yeah, it's 65, six, and the ARPA funds was around 40, 70.
Yeah, it was almost 50,000. So we still got 15 grand in it?
Yeah, and those were from funds left over at the end of last year as well.
That's covered too. And we can, we can turn it, roll them over into this year? The funds left from last year?
Yeah, they got encumbered last year with the resource.
Oh, they've been held because of the nature of this grant?
Okay.
And then we just verify it, as long as council approves the purchase, then we can move forward in that.
And what do we do with the other crew?
Uh, it'll probably be used for some training. And otherwise, we'll have to look at selling or donating somewhere else.
Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Commandant?
Yes.
Is Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Ordinance seven twenty-five pass. Ordinance eight twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it.
And ordinance authorizing the purchase of two vehicles for the service department and declaring an emergency. Whereas Nelsonville Service Department is in need of two vehicles. Whereas the service director recommends the purchase of these two thousand twenty-four Ford F three fifty four by four with ready plastic two utility debt for a purchase price of sixty-eight thousand two hundred forty dollars. Whereas the service director recommends the purchase of a twenty-two John Beer three twenty-five G compact track loader for a purchase price of seventy-one thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. Whereas appropriations and funds for the purchase of these two vehicles have already been made. Whereas council finds the purchase price for both vehicles are within stated pricing limit. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The service director is hereby authorized to purchase a twenty-two Ford F three fifty four by four with ready classic two utility debt for a purchase price of sixty-eight thousand two hundred forty dollars. The service director is hereby authorized to purchase a twenty-two John Beer three twenty-five G compact track loader for a purchase price of seventy-one thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. Pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter Section eight point zero five D, council hereby waived any bidding procedure or requirement for these, that these two vehicles may be purchased immediately as vehicles are currently being held by the dealer pending council approval of the purchase. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter Section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to purchase the two vehicles for the service department while the dealer holds these vehicles for the city and it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. It will be enacted by council on first reading on the tenth day of February two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to suspend the rules? Salute. Second. Council discussion on suspension? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt? Salute. Second. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
This was all appropriated this year's budget, Taylor.
That's right. No additional funds would be needed, necessary.
Sorry, buying a Mount Ryan or financing?
All right.
What dealer was being bought by that? I don't know exactly who's dealing. Gotcha.
Are, are we on the trade in? Anything being traded in?
I don't sell wars.
I don't know, they're not turning in anymore.
We're John Beers.
So these are just adding to what we already have?
Yeah.
Too bad. They're phasing out, so one of them is a skin steers. The skin steer we currently have was, uh, given to us by a contractor if we didn't want anymore because it was causing insulin problems.
Well, it wasn't given to us, we paid good money for a piece of crap equipment.
So, yeah. They're phasing that out for the skin steers.
And, 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 and that's the seventy-one thousand one. And then the sixty-eight thousand, two thousand twenty-four. What's that all gonna be used for?
It'd be just a general work truck.
Can I have that?
Does it have a service belt on it?
It'd be a utility belt.
It'll be a crane truck.
Oh, that's the crane truck? I'm pretty sure that's what you said.
A crane truck's old, if that's the one I think of.
Crane truck's very good.
That's like a ninety-eight, isn't it? Ninety-nine. Oh, wow. So, yeah. And the, and the funds are already appropriated for this.
That's right.
So this is, nothing's coming out of the bank?
Uh, there's no new, there's no new.
It wasn't being, okay, yeah, all right.
Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance eight twenty-five passes. Ordinance nine twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it.
I shall. And ordinance requiring certain city officers to be bonded, establishing bond amounts and amending ordinance forty dash twenty-four. Whereas it is desirable to require the city manager, city attorney, I'm sorry, the city auditor, city treasurer, the mayor's court clerk, and the police department's evidence technician to be bonded. Whereas council finds that the appropriate amount for a bond for the city manager is one hundred thousand dollars. That the appropriate amount for a bond for the city auditor is one million dollars. That the appropriate amount for a bond for the city treasurer is three hundred thousand dollars. That the appropriate amount for a bond for the mayor's court clerk is twenty-five thousand. And that the appropriate amount for a bond for the police department's evidence technician is twenty-five thousand dollars. I just forgot that now. Whereas therefore now, I'm sorry, whereas council determines it is appropriate to amend ordinance forty dash twenty-four. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Ordinance forty twenty-four is hereby amended as follows. The following officers and or, I'm sorry, the following offices and or officers are required to be bonded as follows. City manager, one hundred thousand dollars. City auditor, one million dollars. City treasurer, three hundred thousand dollars. Mayor's court clerk, twenty-five thousand dollars. Police department evidence technician, twenty-five thousand dollars. City manager and the city auditor shall take all steps reasonably necessary to ensure that this ordinance is codified in the ex codification of ordinances of the city of Nelsonville. The city shall be responsible for paying the bond premium for each bond hearing required herein. Any bonded office may submit for reimbursement of any bond premium previously paid, and the city auditor shall promptly process a case that rate first. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and other committees, if any, which resulted in formal action are taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment committed by law. It will be enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-fourth day of February two thousand twenty-five.
So is there any council discussion? This is the first reading.
I just, is it, this is an increase on the amount of bonds that anybody's required to have?
It's adding the mayor's court clerk and the police evidence clerk, I believe.
It's just adding the evidence.
I suppose maybe that we're adding, adding to it that we have, already have that, an existing ordinance requiring bonds, correct? Okay. So, you know, did want to make sure this was an increase on.
Um, also, do we have to see these certificates after they're bonded? Do they, are they presented to you?
Via, it's a good question, the charter requires them to be submitted to the office, which is not typical around the state, but that's what the charter requires. I then send a copy for review and approval to the law director. Uh, but we do store the copies in my office.
I, I, the reason I asked this, it was, um, I was told that one of the bonding wasn't done, um, and I was wondering how that happened to be not done and we didn't know about it. So, uh, you do get them from the insurer or from the person being bonded?
From the person being bonded, typically.
Wonder if we could get the insurance into something?
We could ask. We could ask.
That way we surely get it, you know, from an insurer. And the reimbursement part, has that, is that something new?
Uh, it's, I don't think it's new necessarily, I think it's just putting into writing something that, um, we would have done it now.
It's been withdrawn from, from, so Section eleven point oh two of the charter requires that reimbursement. Um, so nothing's being changed, I just added that to facility, sometimes an officer might just pay the bond premium out of pocket without waiting for, just to get bonded. And so that's just making explicit, I believe, what the auditor's office uh, prior practice in terms of processing. And so nothing's being changed without just kind of reflecting the eleven point, uh, eleven point oh two language. We should, there are.
Understaying.
Okay. Ordinance ten twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it? I will.
Second.
And ordinance accepting grant amounts toward the police fire department. Whereas the Ohio Attorney General's Office has awarded a grant to the Nelsonville Police Department to cover the cost of twenty-twenty-four's required continued professional training for the police department officers. Whereas the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation has awarded Nelsonville Fire Department a safety intervention grant. Whereas council finds acceptance of both grants is in the best interest of the city. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The police chief is hereby authorized to receive from the Ohio Attorney General's Office a grant to cover the cost of twenty-twenty-four's required continuing professional training for the police department officers. The fire chief is hereby authorized to receive from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation the safety intervention grant. Council hereby finds and determines that all actions, all formal action taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and other committees, if any, which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment committed by law. It will be enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-fourth day of February two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, this is the first reading, is there any council discussion?
Was this a grant that you applied for, sir?
For?
I'm sorry, I, I look, uh, Chief Oliver, was this a grant that you?
Yes, they'd be able to see grants, uh, why should I write all those grants? Um, usually I've never seen them have to through, whether this process because we already encumbered the match through requisition, but yes.
Want Chief Oliver to answer the same question?
Please do.
Um, I didn't have to apply for it, it's, so every year, every officer's required to do twenty-four hours of continued professional training, state required you to do. There were specific topics, um, I don't know, at the end of it, they reimburse those additional costs that incur for having officers do that on their downtime.
Figure it's slacker then, got it. What does?
It's slacker.
Thank you. Ordinance eleven twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it? Introduce it.
And ordinance amending two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas the twenty-twenty-five appropriations ordinance needs to be amended, whereas appropriations of ten thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars sixty-seven cents to number one hundred general fund line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash two one three zero zero is necessary. Whereas appropriations of four thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars fifty cents to number one hundred general fund line item one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero is necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The twenty-twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated, unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of ten thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars sixty-seven cents from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred to line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash two one three zero zero. Appropriations in the sum of four thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred to line item one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to Section four point one one of Nelsonville City Charter that this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses. It will be enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-fourth day of February two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, is it, this is the first reading, is there any council, uh, discussion? Okay, ordinance twelve twenty-five, if someone would, uh, like to introduce it? Introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city to negotiate an agreement with the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia for the city sewer system to accept sewer discharge from the Bailey's Trail system, abolishing ordinance eighty-six dash twenty-four and declaring an emergency. Whereas by ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen, council authorized the city's membership in the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia or ORCA, Regional Council of Government, also known as COG, whereas the city was a founding member of ORCA. Whereas by ordinance eighty-six dash twenty-four, council approved and authorized payment of current membership dues to ORCA. Whereas ORCA was a to utilize Outdoor Recreation Act assets to deliver economic, health, social, environmental, and quality of life benefits to Ohioans. And develop the world-class Bailey's Trail system across dirt frictional factories. Whereas consistent with that mission, ORCA is developing restrooms and other waste generating facilities to use of the, to users of the Bailey's Trail system to ensure the clean and healthy operation of the Bailey's Trail system and of any waste generated in and around the Bailey's Trail system. Whereas the Ohio EPA has indicated it will withhold final approval of the Bailey's Trail restroom and other waste generating facilities unless and until the city approves accepting a new sewer system. Sewer discharge from the restroom and other waste generating facilities. Whereas council finds it is in the best interest of the city to negotiate an agreement with ORCA for the city to accept the sewer discharge from the Bailey's Trail restroom and other waste generating facilities and if necessary to take over any lift station necessary to accomplish the, such acceptance. On the condition ORCA agrees to accept, I'm sorry, agrees such acceptance shall be deemed as in-kind contribution by the city to permanently cover the entirety of the city's corporate membership dues. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The Acting, the Acting City Manager, Acting City Manager and or Police Chief is hereby authorized, directed, and directed to negotiate the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, Regional Council of Government, an agreement under which one, the city agrees to accept the sewer discharge from the Bailey's Trail restroom and other waste generating facilities and if necessary to take over any lift station necessary to accomplish the acceptance. And two, ORCA agrees to deem such acceptance by the city as an in-kind contribution sufficient to permanently cover the entirety of the city's ORCA membership dues, both current and future dues. The City Manager, Acting City Manager and or Police Chief has full authority to withdraw from any negotiations regarding the agreement if, at the sole discretion of the City Manager, Acting City Manager and or Police Chief after consultation with council. The City Manager, Acting City Manager and or Police Chief determines that any negotiated agreement is materially adverse to the interests of the city of Nelsonville. The City Manager, Acting City Manager and or Police Chief is therefore under no obligation to sign any agreement or any related agreements or certificates thereto. The City Manager, Acting City Manager and or Police Chief is hereby authorized to sign any final negotiated agreements pending final approval to council. Any such final negotiated agreement shall be promptly submitted to council for final approval by council. Ordinance eighty-six dash twenty-four is hereby abolished. Accordingly, no payment of funds shall any longer be paid out of the Nelsonville Treasury to ORCA or the city's ORCA membership dues, or the city's ORCA membership dues. City Council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter Section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four- point thirty, Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to negotiate an agreement with ORCA to accept sewer discharge in compliance with Ohio EPA regulation, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, only acted by council on first reading the tenth day of February two thousand twenty four.
Motion to suspend the rules? So moved. Second. Council discussion on suspension. Will call on suspension.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith? Yes. Nothing?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Motion to adopt? So moved. Second. Any citizens comments? Council discussion.
Who, who's going to pick up the charge for all of the additional, who and he that's going to be coming into Nelsonville?
It'll be a public restroom at the start of a trailhead, so I don't think it'll really be that much volume added to us.
Do we have sewer lines over in Bellville?
And it's not in Bellville, it's for the trailhead, they're putting in local, the support center.
Yeah. Well, we, we just agree that we have to pick up the one in Bellville, because that's, that's part of it.
No, this is, this is specific to the restroom they're putting in.
But it also talks about lift stations, so.
Yeah, so along with the restroom they're building, it's going to have to have a lift station. And once they design and build the lift station, then we'll be responsible for the maintenance. This will be part of our sewer system anyway at that point.
So Nelsonville is going to be paying for all of this?
No.
Just maintaining it?
We maintain, we'll have to maintain.
Well, maintaining?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know the problems we're having now with the smell and everything, so.
And that'll be pumping it up over the hill, or that lift station?
Uh, I don't know exactly which lift station it'll feed into from there, um, but it'll be a brand new lift station.
How much is the dues?
Uh, around five thousand dollars a year.
Five hundred. Right, yeah.
Five hundred thousand?
No, 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 no. Five hundred dollars.
The check we paid was five hundred dollars. That's what they invoiced, yeah.
That's what ORCA invoiced? It was supposed to be five thousand.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I was gonna say, they.
It's ten easy payments.
Yeah.
Their, ORCA's billing arrangement ended up being a dollar per citizen in, within the municipalities that participate in ORCA, based off the most recent census.
Got it. So, so you said the five hundred dollar check?
I thought the five hundred dollars was in the, uh, development of the COG that we participated in.
Are we talking about different fees?
Yeah, we're talking about the annual fee.
Yeah, the five hundred dollars I thought was part, be part of the COG.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, I could misunderstand that.
They may not have actually invoiced even. Um, I know I had seen, I have seen some draft invoices, but I don't think that they were final, um, partly because they were very difficult to read, and I think they're actually direct. I think I actually saw the city of Athens invoices rather than the city of Nelsonville, so it's possible ORCA hasn't invoiced the city for those, that membership.
Okay, wait a minute. Are we talking about the COG money, or are we talking about ORCA and this station that we're talking about?
Well, the, this, this station would be in lieu of the five thousand, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's their intent. It's not finalized yet, but they indicate that we take over the maintenance and accept the sewage, but that'll be an in-kind donation for all the services that we give.
So would this be beneficial for the city?
Yeah.
On, on a couple of different levels. One is the tourism part of it, which we will realize.
Are they suing?
With the restroom, Johnny, at the trailhead. If, okay, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got you.
All right. So as a side note, the project that's ongoing over Borough Boulevard is addressing the sewer line issue, right?
At least part of it.
Yeah, at least part of it. So hopefully that'll lead you.
We have a separate solution going on in the works for helping to mediate as well.
Right.
Five thousand annual fee, correct?
Yep.
I don't feel like we'll do five thousand, only with the maintenance of a brand new system.
Yeah, listen, what, sixteen hundred or three thousand dollars?
Main, for something that size, it's not going to have massive amount of.
Yeah. One thing that might happen, I don't, I don't have any, but you might pick up other people in the area that want to pay to go in.
Yeah, there we go. Attack fees.
Just want to keep you around.
Yeah.
Just that reason, just that reason, right?
Right there. Paid off.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Clerk call the rule.
Nothing?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So, ordinance twelve twenty five passes. Uh, resolution twenty three thirty one, if someone would like to introduce it? Introduce it.
Thank you. A resolution authorizing the city to enter into a programmatic agreement with Ohio State's Historic Preservation Office, or S H P O, for programs using funds originating from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Whereas the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development has located, I'm sorry, has allocated community development block grant and other community planning and development C P V funds to the Ohio Department of Development. Whereas the Ohio Department of Development has awarded C P V and other C P V funds to the city of Nelsonville. Whereas none of his delegated compliance responsibility pursuant to twenty four C F R Part fifty eight. Whereas the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office has prepared a rec, a recommended programmatic agreement covering and regulating the use of C P V G and other C P V funds, which have been awarded to the city. Whereas council determined entering into the programmatic, programmatic agreement prepared and recommended by S H P O is in the best interest of the city. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief shall be and hereby are authorized to negotiate with the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office a programmatic agreement covering and regulating the use of C P V G and other C P V funds, which have been awarded to the city of Nelsonville. A copy of the agreement in its current form is as prepared by S H P O is attached here to as of today. At the conclusion of negotiation, the city manager, acting city manager and/or police chief shall have, shall have full authority to execute the programmatic agreement and its final negotiated form with S H P O. Council shall by separate legislation provide for any appropriations to funds that may be necessary. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in meetings open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, only adopted by council on first reading the tenth day of February two thousand twenty five.
Motion to adopt? So moved. Any citizens comments? Council discussion?
How much, how much are they? How much are the green?
Uh, I don't have any specific.
And this is money to what?
I don't have it in front of me, so.
Free money out there.
Well, I, I'm concerned about this, but.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, yeah, because I don't want to be called hospital, always.
So we have no, the money's going to be used.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. O'Grady would pass the money, right?
Yeah, I believe in what?
So it's, it's related to the, the, um, so HAPCAP administers certain, um, parts of the programs, and so that there are, it's fairly regular where with those funds, they finance people to buy homes, and then there's a mortgage, secured by a mortgage to the city, the, the loan funds, and then so the city, I'm correct if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Grady, but city receives funds as part of that, but it's actually HAPCAP that does all the administration. If that's correct.
And, and we are typically not involved in that process, other than just it's, we are authorizing the monies to pass through the city in those programs. So it's no different than if you think about when Fair Stewart passes money through the city to take care of the public square, it's the same sort of process. So we don't, we give the authority.
Is it because we're five oh one three C and they're not, or is that correct? I mean, I, part of, part of the city's involvement are any of the mortgages before they're recorded, I review them, but they're submitted, like HUD does all the, so, like what, and that provides me the information regarding the specific properties and, and the mortgage reported, and at that point, any things eventually get processed by your office, is that correct?
Um, my understanding is that it's a percentage of the mortgage is held in custody here, um, then when the mortgage is either paid off, or if the homeowner sells before the terms are over, uh, we issue those funds back to HAPCAP, but other than that, we have no.
Yeah, we hold the mortgage. Did I hear you wrong or right?
We hold a portion of the mortgage proceeds. We're a percentage.
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
It's used as collateral, I think, so because the program, again, we don't manage it, we.